Good evening, man, everyone. Call to order to Townsible Falls Planning Commission meeting, August 23rd, 2022. Please salute the flag.
I would like to salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as we're all.
Mr. Vinnie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Leschek?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Vinnie's here, Chairman Haney.
Present.
Records show that Mr. McTeague is not here.
All right, item number one, WMRE Fairless RNG Facility 1,000, New Ford Mill Road, Marsville, preliminary and final land development.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis, Begley Carlin here tonight on behalf of Waste Management. This is a project which I know has been in the works for a couple of years, which we're excited to unveil and have the opportunity to move forward with this evening. The subject property tax parcel ID is 13-47-128, and what we're looking to do essentially is to construct two renewable natural gas facilities, and these structures are going to be approximately 20,000 square feet each. They are contained within Waste's approximately 47-acre parcel, and if you allow us this evening, we're going to discuss why we're excited and specifically the environmental benefit that this project is going to offer the township, its residents, and the community. Specifically, this is going to reduce greenhouse gases and offer an approximate annual reduction in carbon dioxide emissions of around 170,000 tons a year. This is also going to offer the opportunity for Waste to decommission five enclosed flares at this location. This is going to be an approximately $90 million investment in the community. It's going to add jobs, and we hope this is going to be operational by 2024. This is part of a broader plan that Waste Management is looking to implement beyond just the site, but I think it's accurate to state that this is one of, if not the largest investment in the region for this sort of renewable energy project. As a housekeeping item, we did resubmit the plans to Joe Jones' office approximately two weeks ago. I think before we have the opportunity to move forward to the supervisors, we should have a reduced and cleaner review letter. What I would like to do, have Adam from Waste Management with me, we have Waste's team here this evening, but I think it would be useful to have Adam address the Planning Commission about the genesis of this project and why Waste is so excited about it, and then we'd have Dave Allen, our project engineer, give a brief overview of the plan, and then I'd be happy to discuss the couple waivers that we have this evening. So, thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Adam Stowe, I'm with WM Renewable Energy. Waste Management actually operates the largest number of landfill gas energy facilities in the country. This facility in particular is really the next level of state-of-the-art landfill gas beneficial reuse facilities. We've built five similar to this one in throughout the country. This one represents, like you said, basically a 90 to $100 million investment by the company. Company made an announcement a few months ago that it's going to be investing over $800 million over the next four years in 17 projects similar to this one. So, when this one's all said and done, pending all approvals, this would be the largest renewable natural gas plant in the country that Waste Management operates. So, this is a big project for us, we're very excited about it. As you can see from the drawing, it's utilizing the landfill gas from the Fairless complex, which would be routed to the two facilities along New Ford Mill Road. Each facility would have a separate train, a gas train, 6,000 SCFM each, and so each one would basically operate together but separately, and it would, when it's all said and done, I think is the equivalent of 3 million MMBT of gas produced from this that will be then injected into the natural gas pipeline, the local natural gas pipeline. So, all said and done, this is going to serve as 65,000 homes in Pennsylvania annually, the amount of gas produced, or offset the equivalent of over 2,700 large diesel trucks that we're, we've switched over, that our company's invested a great deal of time and investment in the transition of our fleet to CNG trucks. So, that's exciting for us, we're getting rid of the diesel trucks, we've got goals to transition our fleet to the CNG, and this plays a role in that. So, pick up the garbage at the curb, we put it in the landfill, we take that landfill gas, we clean it up, inject it in the pipeline, and then it's pulled back out at one of our over 160 natural gas fueling stations throughout the country. So, the company's excited about this, we're all excited about this here, and feel free to ask any questions on the process or anything you need technical, I'm here to help.
And then Dave, if you could introduce yourself, and then if you don't mind, give a bit of a summary about what the Planning Commission is looking at with our site plan.
Absolutely. Good evening, I'm Dave Allen, I'm a Senior Project Manager at EarthRes. We're doing the site permitting and DEP permitting for the project. As Mike and Adam mentioned, it's a very exciting project from an environmental standpoint, and it's also a very large project. Just before I take down the aerial view, I just want to mention that the sighting question is just south of the Wheelerbator facility, so it's just south of that. So, I'll turn up the record plan room. I am going to go through the site design on a high level and then just open it up for questions, but really, the parcel that this project is on, as Mike mentioned, is 47 acres. The project area is approximately 18 acres, 15 of which is the actual facility. The rest will be sanitary forest main to the north and also a landfill gas pipeline to the south. The, as Mike mentioned, the two buildings are, you know, 20,000 square foot, they're identical, so they have the same capacity, same layout, and you can obviously see with the parking layout, that's mirrored, you know, with the two plans. The reason we have the driveway where it's located, it's lined up with the, there's a property across the road, they have a truck entrance, so we line that up with that entrance, and it's also at the end of an auxiliary lane for that same facility. That is under review with PENDOT right now, they did issue us a review, I believe, two weeks ago, it was a very short review letter, which was good to see. Obviously, you can tell we're sweeping into the facility, and you see darker gray, which is going to be paved, and then the lighter gray is going to be gravel. And then around the building, we're going to have concrete pads for equipment, there is pressure vessels, you know, transformers located outside the building on the east, which is the top, and west, which is the bottom. The parcel itself is quite long, so it has 46 linear foot of frontage, and it's about 384 feet in depth, so it's an unusual parcel. The reason for that is actually, it used to be the old Turkey Hill Executive Golf Course, so if you're out there today, you can actually see the, you know, the holes, the old tee-offs. So, the site is, today is grass, wooded areas. The stormwater sheet flows off of New Ford Mill Road, and then eventually makes its way to the old Scott's Creek, which is on the bottom of the sheet. We are proposing a rather large stormwater basin on the north side of the south, it's approximately a two-acre footprint, and it's proposed to be an infiltration basin. So, primarily, the grading of the site is draining north. We do have a series of inlets and stormwater pipes on the east side of the plants and also on the west side. Generally, that's the overview of the project, I can obviously, you know, answer any specific questions.
And maybe, Dave, you and I can just run through the waiver requests that we're seeking, and then open it up to the Planning Commission for some questions. We have what I would label three waivers, and then a comment at the end regarding the tree replacement. The first waiver is from 19136D relating to curbing for driveways. There is no curbing along the western portion of the Ford Mill Road. Our concern, and Dave can elaborate if there's any questions about this, relates to what the effect would be regarding drainage if we installed curbing in this location on the plan. The second note would be 19136G2 regarding curb planning beds. There are a few areas depicted on the plan, maybe, Dave, you could highlight where we would not like raised curb planning beds. There are some operational constraints in those regards that, again, we can highlight if requested. And then 191 echoing 48A regarding street trees on New Ford Mill Road. We're posing to plant shrubs along the frontage, there is an overhead line which prevents, from a practical standpoint, the installation and planting of street trees. With respect to fee and lieu from 1994B6A regarding replacement trees, we'll work with the township to their satisfaction to come up with a satisfactory number. And then, Dave, if there's any additional context that you want to add for any of those waiver requests, of course, feel free, but otherwise, everything else is a will comply, and we are seeking preliminary final recommended approval this evening. Thank you.
Just to clarify, you said 19936G2, or did you mean 37G2?
37, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Quick question, just to clarify, you said that the natural gas is going to be piped right back into the existing lines, right? There's going to, right to the system?
Yeah, there's going to be an interconnect point right at this gas metering area right here.
Please speak into the microphone, sir.
That's okay. There's going to be an interconnect with the local pipeline distribution company's going to bring their line to this gas metering area, so we're going to tie into their system there, and it's going to be meter, I mean, it's just basically a meter a yard volume to gas quality that they can monitor as it goes into their system.
And so, you stated that you have converted all your trucks over, your trucks going to fuel here, or are they going to fuel some, where are they going to fuel at?
No, they're not going to fuel here, they're already fueling, I think there's a Philadelphia hauling.
They're already fueling in Bristol, the Hayes Boulevard. This pipeline carries it across the country, so.
You can't hear them, so we need to be on the mic.
So, the closest fueling station is on Hayes Boulevard.
In Bristol Township, at our Del Valle North site, so. And then we had one in Camden, New Jersey, I believe, is the second closest, and then I think we'll put one in Trenton, so. But this pipeline they're talking about is Transcontinental, Brian, so it's going to go across the whole country.
So, basically, the other two facilities that are already local to this, because it's going to be pulling exactly out from that, so the one off Tyburn Road and the one in Sylvie?
Yeah, they may benefit from it too. Yep.
So, what's the purpose of all the gravel?
The gravel is just at the, the west side of the site is a laydown area, so during construction, there's going to be room for equipment to stage there, and then what we're trying to do with the paved is encourage a travel path for people, vendors, it's not open to the public, so vendors, employees, they use the paved area to access the parking.
So, if the gravel area is just for construction, why doesn't it go away?
The area will be used for maintenance throughout the project, but again, the paved area is really just to guide people to the parking spaces, so they're not driving in front of the facilities.
So, what would be maintained there?
In regards to pavement and gravel?
The gravel, you said the gravel would be used as a maintenance area, what would be maintained there?
There would be, again, equipment stays here during construction, whether or not they would need to use that area during operation, normal operations, I don't believe that would be the case, it would be used for, again, swapping out equipment, membrane.
Yeah, there's, sorry, on the backside of the facility, it's hard to see in that detail, but there's, there's a series of, we do a lot of our treatment with activated carbon, so there's large vessels that will take media changeouts, so from time to time, I think there's another drawing that we've got for PENDOT that shows the traffic plan, basically semi-trucks being able to loop the building, drop off this activated carbon media, will have a crane, has to come in to actually lift the media up into the vessels, and so it's really for maintenance access around the backside, because most of the equipment is going to be located on that backside, so it's really for access and maintenance of the equipment and the changeouts.
What's the carbon removing?
The first stage would be H2S, so we have H2S treatment vessels, so we're pulling that H2S out, and then there are some other vessels that are associated with the CO2 removal and the nitrogen removal, so every stage of this process uses that media, which there's vessels outside which we would need to change out six months, maybe every year, so it's really for access to those vessels.
With the gravel, is there any risks that we run with any hazardous materials or chemicals we'd be utilizing with the gravel, it can get through to the groundwater versus like containment pit or anything like this?
Well, I'll just go, well, so that's why we're going to have concrete, so the concrete will be placed in and around the equipment, and there's going to be trench drains in and around the aftercoolers, vessels that are going to have media changeouts, so that's that area that's labeled as concrete. So, yes, we have a containment, we'll have to have a stormwater management plan, an SBCC Storm Spill Prevention and Control Plan, and so that will incorporate those trench drains in there.
Just to clarify, that would be for containment, not stormwater, so they'd be?
Oh, yeah, sorry, spill containment. And then even inside the facility, we've got a trench drain that's, all the compressors will be housed in the facility, and they'll be trenching inside there as well to contain any spills, oil, anything like that.
Mr. McGinnis, as far as the Fire Marshal's letter and Remington Vernick's letter, it's all will comply?
Yes, everything is a will comply in both of those.
Mr. Jones, any comments?
The only comment I have is that we run the impression that the gravel was certainly a laydown area, and that I'm sure the Planning Commission that it was going to be used for truck circulation, we'll make sure the proper asphalt pavement is located where the trucks will circulate, but landfill has always been acceptable for storage and equipment.
Any other comments from the board?
My only concern with the gravel is that if it's plowed, it migrates, and the gravel areas become bigger and bigger and bigger, and you know how that works.
I'm assuming we have nobody calling in? All right, with that, I'll take a motion.
There was a comment in the, Joe, Mr. Jones, there was a comment in the Bucks County Planning Commission letter about violation of the wetlands margin, and based on the numbers I see here, they're compliant, they're not disturbing more than 20%.
And we're more sure that 50% wouldn't be disturbing desire during the resolution, so they go for it, except for parts.
As far as the, as far as the street tree, or the tree ordinance goes, if you guys are going to replant 4,617 inches of tree somewhere, I don't know where, but we've got to do something.
We look forward to turning the balance of Falls Township into a forest.
We've got to do something about that.
We do, we agreed. We adopted an ordinance that we have to live with now, and it's difficult, and so we pragmatically look at the disturbance in terms of like qualifying acreages, and that helps a little bit, and we try to offset with shrubs, but at the end of the day, there's an awful lot of trees that have to be replaced.
Which we're going, we acknowledge we have to deal with here, and we're in communications with the township to come to a mutually acceptable and compliant resolution.
We've agreed to a dollar 50 a tree, and we still get $20,000.
I think there might be some lots at Penn Water, people would like some trees put in.
I could use a couple in my backyard.
Other than that, we'll follow Jason's.
That's crazy.
Any other questions or comments? I'm taking a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve preliminary and final land development for WMRE Fairless RNG Facility with the waiver request 19136D, 19137G2, 19148A, and work with the township on 1994B6A.
Correct.
And you will comply with the Fire Marshal's plan and?
Traffic engineer.
Traffic, the traffic study. And you also said you will comply with the, or work with the Bucks County Planning Commission on their issue.
Yes, everything, the balance is a will comply.
Okay, all right. I'll second.
Mr. Vinnie, please pull the board.
Ms. Leschek?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How are we going to deal with this next one?
I have a site plan on my phone. I can project it.
Well, we can pull the drawings, I don't know.
Throw the rolling stuff out.
So are they going to send us like pigeons if we said something wrong? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Next item, item number two, Keystone Trade Center, Morton Salt, 10 Solar Drive, Fairless Hills.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin, here on behalf of North Point. I have Jeremy and Peyton with me on North Point's behalf and Eric Clayes here in spirit. We are seeking to develop the, a portion of the mother parcel, the 13-51-001 parcel on North Point's property to accommodate the construction of a 115,200 square foot salt storage structure for Morton Salt. The proposal would help facilitate the removal of the existing Morton Salt structure. Morton currently leases approximately 120,000 square feet of space. After the 115,000 square foot structure is completed, the portion of the prior lease that's in effect will expire and then this will allow for a more cohesive and beneficial future development on North Point's end. What I would like to state, just as an odd housekeeping item, is technically this is classified as a building, it's a building, it's an enclosure, but it's not a occupied space. This is essentially a giant salt barn that's being constructed. I think that's relevant for things like Fire Marshal consideration and other items, but I'd like to have Jeremy briefly discuss what this plan is about and then we can address the waiver requests that are in front of the planning commission.
Where, before we do that, where is the area that's, the lease that's going to be abandoned after this is built? Where is that?
Yeah, if you're coming in Ben Fairless, sorry, is this one? Sorry, okay, so if you come in Ben Fairless, just past the office building on the left, GMA Garnet has it branded on the side, Morton actually leases the 120,000 square feet to the north end of that building, so they'll vacate first and then GMA following. Oh, and sorry, yeah, so Mike hit on a lot of the kind of high level stuff, but obviously we're kind of looking into the future phase of the development. As part of that, there is a little bit of an opportunity to kind of combine Morton's operation into one facility. They currently use the north end of that GMA building for bulk salt storage, so this is just kind of relocating that operation to their other premise on site. Mike touched on it as well, it's basically just a giant salt barn, you know, we'll have poured concrete foundation walls, clear span, fabric structure kind of covering it, open on the ends, they'll have some conveyors and equipment to handle the equipment or to handle material, but other than that, you know, an occupied space. Do have a few waivers, you know, we are encroaching on the flood plain. We've limited the kind of circulation drive and the size of the building as much as we possibly could and still meet, you know, Morton's requirements to relocate to the facility, so tried to find the sweet spot in between those and I guess if there's any other technical questions, happy to address those.
We have, just procedurally, that waiver is from 191-521, well, it's noted as 191-521B1A, but I think it's probably technically from 191-521C2A to permit the disturbance of the flood plain, which will coordinate with Joe's office and also with FEMA as is needed to mitigate. We have a waiver request from 191-521B4B2 regarding Woodland's disturbance of approximately .37 acres to facilitate this project. 191-521B8A and B86, which deal with the disturbance of wetlands, which we will also be mitigating on the site and coordinating with Joe's office.
Is that B86 or B8B?
Yeah, I think it's B86 and B8A.
B8B.
Because I can't read tonight.
That's okay.
And then 191-78C2, which is the 200 foot existing features waiver. Those are the five waiver requests, and then just as a secondary housekeeping item, after, either before the vote or after the vote, there's one other item that we would like to discuss that's related to North Point, but unrelated to the Morton Salt development.
So just, this is behind the Toll Brothers laid down parking lot, correct?
Yep.
Maybe this is another item that's not related to Morton Salt, but I have a pass to get in there, but someone like Partners here don't, can we make arrangements for that to happen?
Of course.
One of the master plan?
No, just to gain access to the property so when there's something...
Oh, so a passcode, I'm sorry.
Certainly for anything that's coming in front of the planning commission.
I always go look at everything, so when I, when I see this, I have a pass to get in there, so you turn it off tomorrow, but...
And what Jeremy's referencing, in light of that comment that we were going to discuss as well as months ago, there was a discussion about coming back in front of the planning commission regarding the master site plan, and we were actually going to offer the planning commission to either have that conversation this evening or have it specifically scheduled as a September agenda item. And Eric was, would have the ability to share the screen, that's no longer available unfortunately, so I will state otherwise that we would be more than happy to have that listed as its own agenda item, not for the vote, but just for an open conversation about it at the September meeting, we're not ignoring, ignoring that.
If the internet fairy comes back before you're done, we'll redress that.
All right, sounds good.
So I, just speaking on that comment, I was down there recently and I did see that there are some sidewalks installed already. And a lot of construction going on.
Quick construction.
In all seriousness, in terms of like access codes, just please let us know, I think most of you guys have my contact information, but if not, reach out. As a footnote to that, we actually got kind of our concurrence letter from DEP that the access, the access control can come down. We're not intending to do that until later in the year, maybe even first of next year, but eventually the gates will be open normally, so during normal working hours, you guys will be able to kind of access the site a little more freely.
Mr. Jones, have any concerns about the flood plain issues or the wetlands issues?
No, the, Mr. Benny, the applicant will be obligated to submit a flood plain permit for any disturbance and we've worked with their engineer previously on the compensatory storage concept and we're confident that in this case we'll be able to satisfy flood plain management requirements. I will add that for belt and suspenders, we identified 191-36D since the driveway continuation doesn't have curbing, that maybe we should ask for that waiver.
That became a will comply item, at least in, well, you, Jeremy, you speak for yourself on that.
I would guess my preference is, Mr. Jones is pointing out, like we would prefer to have it in case, but we are going to try to comply as much as possible with that.
Which ordinance was that?
It was 191-36D.
Yes.
So I guess we can, we can resolve that before we get to the board to sit down.
Yes, sure, yeah.
Sure, they're not asking for that. So you're not asking for that? They are, they are, they're asking for it in event that they can.
Yeah, exactly, so it's better to have, if you guys will allow it, you know, we intend to comply, but it's, we're still kind of working through some of the final grading plan with, as it relates to stormwater.
They can work it out with Joe. Yeah. Well, I also had one other procedural question, so the first one you said 191-521, it's listed here as B1A, but you said it's C2A?
Well, it's B1, it's B1A, but then if you look at Joe's letter, the notation, I think, states, "In accordance with 191-521B1A, refer to flood plain management ordinance," and then the comment is, "It appears the applicant is requesting a waiver from 191-521C2A," which I think is correct.
That's the correct citation.
I just wanted to procedurally ask that.
And then the one thing I just want to add, kind of for the whole group and just with the site master plan comment is, if we can work when things start to change, the fire departments have been down there a couple times the past few months, working through a couple different things with just access and get their one to gate coming down, that would be great, and when they can come in and out, but if we go to the point where it's going to be bad on all hours, make sure if we upgrade the system, that the local fire departments get that, and might want to work through some of the, when you upgrade the infrastructure with some of the hydrants and the water, just with the amount of metal being down there and lithium batteries and everything else going on now. I think, what was it, Rite 20, two different, pretty decent fires in the, over the summer, so this would be a good opportunity to try and improve some of those things for access and water for the fire departments.
Absolutely.
And Mr. McGinnis, as far as the Fire Marshal and the traffic engineers' review letters, will comply?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else, Mr. Jones?
Nothing for him.
Any public comment outside, since the TV's on now? I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion for preliminary final land development for MPT Falls Township Industrial, LLC, 10 Solar Drive, Morton Salt with the conditional waivers. 191-521C2A, 191-36D, 191-521B4B2, 191-521B8A, 191-521B8B, 191-78C2, and will comply with the Fire Marshal and as far as the flood plain goes, you'll be in accordance with Jones' engineering and FEMA.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson, we amend that 191-78C2 that the applicant will provide sufficient information for Mr. Jones to review plans, which usually is what we do, partial waiver.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's my motion. I'll second.
Mr. Benny, pull the board.
Ms. Leschek?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
And I guess it's probably best that we do the master plan thing.
Because the engineer's probably not on.
Plus it's getting late.
September 7th.
Yeah, we're in overtime now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, item number three, minutes from July 26, 2022, any issues with what's printed? additions or modifications? All in favor of the minutes as printed?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.